Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Goffstown Board of Select meeting, August 22nd, 2011. And our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. If all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next order of business is the acceptance or corrections of minutes of 6:15.
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
That's public and non-public.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Any corrections or additions?
Did you say that was 6:15 or 8:15?
I probably said 6:15, but I meant 8:15.
Okay, thank you.
That's okay. Do you have any corrections, any comments, seeing any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Next item, we have announcements. I believe we have one or two announcements. Do we have any others besides what we? We have one to our hour, Catherine. I wanted to thank you for your assistance with a smile. Our class of 2013 car washes were very successful and we had a great time. You were so helpful. Thanks, Lisa Mailhoff, class of 2013. And nice job. Thank you, Catherine.
I take it that was Goffstown High School?
Yes.
Yep.
Chair, since we're putting accolades on Catherine, I just want to again thank Catherine. We've been doing a lot of work with this 250th and Catherine has been like right there helping us all along the way. And she's been fielding a lot of phone calls and just a lot of logistical support and we wouldn't have been able to do without her. So I just want to thank Catherine publicly for that.
Great. Nice job. Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you all very much.
Do you have anything, Sue?
Nope.
I know we have something from the 250th.
Yes, we do. First off, Phil, I'd just like to let you know that the block party is this Saturday, August 27th.
You sure about that?
Yeah, it's August 27th. And Andrew, you can probably focus on the other side or Dave, if you want to hold that up.
He's got color on me.
It's going to start at 12 o'clock and then it will, the fireworks will be probably around 8:30. They're going to last about a half an hour. And I just want to read just a letter to the folks who might live in this general area. And it's a letter that's being hand-delivered this Wednesday to all.
Who's it from?
It's from us. It's from our committee. Dear neighbor, on Saturday, August 27th, the 250th Anniversary Committee and the Goffstown Lions Club will sponsor a block party and fireworks in the village. This event will feature over 28 bands, food vendors. We have, I think we have about 17 food vendors, children's entertainment, and we have about 30 general vendors as well. And the evening will culminate with a fantastic Atlas fireworks display. The location of the block party will be within the areas of Main Street, Church Street, Kendall Hadley Way, and Depot Street. And our plans require us to close a small portion of Church Street from Main Street to the post office Citizens Bank parking lot, starting at 8:00 a.m. on Saturday morning, 8:27. In addition, we will also close the portion of Depot Street from the propane tanks at Ace Hardware to Kendall Hadley Way, starting at 8:00 a.m. Only a small portion of Depot Street will be open to accommodate local businesses. However, at 6:00 p.m., all of Depot Street will be closed for viewing of the fireworks. The post office, Citizens Bank, and all the business customers will be detoured around North Mast Street to Church Street. Okay, so if you need to use the post office or the bank, you need to come around North Mast and you can make a left, I think it's White Street. And then you make another left on Church Street. And so it's a slight detour, a little bit of an inconvenience, but we only do this once every 50 years.
That's going to be in the morning?
Correct, the morning.
What time will that be? That loop have to be made?
That will be from 8:00 a.m.
8:00 o'clock.
Till 1:00 p.m. And then the bank and the post office close. And then we're going to push the barricades back to where the fire station is. Now, here's an important one. The Town Hall parking lot will be closed from, starting at 6:00 p.m. Friday night, 8:26, and no cars will be allowed to park overnight. Any vehicle left in the lot will be towed. The reason for this is that we're closing the lot to prepare, to set up for the vendors, community groups, and entertainment. We're renting a stage from the City of Manchester, their portable, their mobile stage, and that's being delivered at 4:00 p.m. this Friday. And it'll be along the fence line here at Town Hall. If you have any questions, give us a call here at Town Hall and we'll be able to help you out. We urge all residents and business owners to either park their vehicles outside the block party area on Friday night or relocate their car if they live next door here prior to 8:00 a.m. on Saturday. Because once we close off the roads, their kind of, their car is kind of landlocked in there. You can't move it. And we can't allow cars to be driving along now because it'll be a pedestrian walkway. And if they do need a park, if people live close by and they need a parking pass, see Catherine, she has them to show your piece of mail or an ID and will give you a parking pass and they can park in a designated lot.
But not on Saturday?
I wasn't requested to be here Saturday.
No, they won't call her on Saturday.
No, I'm just saying that.
They can see me or Elizabeth or somebody else. We'll be wearing a special colored, I think it's a yellow colored tee-shirt. So with that, I believe in talking with Sue, we do need to have a motion to temporarily not allow overnight parking on Friday night, 8:26, through.
From 6:00 p.m.?
From, right, from 6:00 p.m.
To Saturday.
To Saturday.
What time on Saturday?
Midnight.
Midnight?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
Just a question, is that something we can do by vote?
Yeah.
Does that require an ordinance?
No, it doesn't. Attorney Drescher has said that you can do temporary ones like that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
And, you know, the only thing I want to urge residents is that, you know, we do have very limited parking in the village as it is. So that, so parking will be somewhat of a challenge. We do have parking at Maple Avenue School in the village, library lot. We're also going to have Cemetery Field available for parking and our Parks and Rec Department is going to mow it and they're going to put down some paint lines to let people know there. So we urge people to carpool and to, you know, walk in. There'll also be shuttle buses. Shuttle buses are being sponsored by Goffstown Truck Center and they'll be picking people up from the villa, the parking lot. And the bus stop will be at Norman Road where the junior baseball, you know, where you cross the street into that parking lot there. There'll be a bus stop there. There'll be a bus stop at the main entrance of Goffstown High School. And then another one at Barnard Park. And they'll be making that loop every, about 10 minutes, there'll be two buses going around. That'll start at noon and that'll end after the fireworks are over. And if we have a lot of demand for that, we're going to bring extra buses on to get people out of there, out of the village, you know, after the fireworks. So I do urge people to, like I said, to, you know, consider, you know, carpooling, walk in if it's not that far of a walk. And I'll do a plug for the rail trail. It's an opportunity to take your bike in. It's another, you can probably park at the county complex and ride your bike in and just, you know, lock it up somewhere around here and well, should be pretty good. And then that, we'll hope for good weather. And that's it. We've planned a lot and I hope everyone will enjoy themselves this Saturday.
Any questions, Scott? No? Okay, thank you very much, Scott. Are there any other announcements? If not, our next item is public comment. At this point, we take comments from members of the public. If there's anybody who would like to make a comment, please come forward. And Cynthia, we're going to need your name for the record.
Right. Cynthia Bovier, For Worthly Hill Road. I was here a couple of weeks ago and I did receive a reply from the town and I appreciate that. Unfortunately, as I looked into it, the RSA that was quoted doesn't, I don't, it doesn't cover what was being said, that it said, "The plans I just gave you, these are town plans of when the roundabout was going in and the intersection of Worthly Hill Road was changed." The orange lines that you see are the Worthly Hill Road right-of-way and the Wallace Road right-of-way. So that's just for your information so you can see it. The area that's hatched, that's where Worthly Hill Road was taken out from, let's say, Lamson Avenue to Wallace Road. The hatching area is where all the pavement was taken out. And then that blank thing in the middle, new, paved new 12-foot wide drive, that's the area that we are, we are saying that the town needs to be maintaining. What was quoted to us in the letter from the town dated August 4th says that the maintenance of that driveway over the public right-of-way associated with the Class 5 traveled way is our responsibility. Your legal opinion stated that the town's responsibility to maintain a Class 5 road does not extend to the driveway connection, which by New Hampshire State statute remains the responsibility of the abutting property owner. The driveway connection is that portion of the driveway from the edge of the public right-of-way to the edge of the traveled way. So that's the letter that we got from the town. It doesn't mention the RSA. I call, I emailed Sue and she sent me the RSA and it's 236, section 236, colon 13, section 6. And I'm not going to read the whole thing, but what it says is unless the access is a public right-of-way. So that section of where we access what is now Worthly Hill Road is still the public right-of-way. So the RSA does not, nowhere in the RSA, anywhere does it mention anything about the traveled way. There's no mention of wherever the town may have the road or whatever. And I will go back and say, this was all town work. The town, these are town plans, the town paid for these roads. I don't know if federal estate money was involved. We did not petition to have this done. We didn't ask. We were asked if we minded, we had the, we had the choice. We could have either had our driveway come out this way or go to Wallace Road, but the connection for our public right-of-way. But what this law is saying, is it's saying from the public right-of-way, that is where that orange line crosses our old driveway. There is no orange line from the extension of Lamson Avenue over to Wallace Road. Then, when I, when I also was going back and forth with Sue with email, she also referred to this booklet, A Hard Road to Travel, page 125, which means and says also that an owner must maintain the driveway. Again, they are talking about to that public right-of-way. So everything in orange is still the public right-of-way. So what was the interpretation of the law and even per this book, it's not saying that we have to maintain that portion of the road. It's, that's never said. That is not our driveway. We didn't build it. So again, it's still a Class 5 road. There's been no change in the status of the road. It is a Class 5 road. And there's been no petition to change it, the status of the road. There's been no talking to us about it. Page 59 of this book, How Classifications Get Changed, I suggest that you read that and especially the bottom portion of that page. It is, it is very specific. And the town has an obligation to be maintaining a Class 5 road and not doing it. Even not, if you don't do it for five years, we're not even five years. This project, I don't even know if is completely done. If it was done, it was done in 2010. So we're not even talking about the five years. So it is still the whole town's responsibility. On page 58 of this book that was referred to by the town, "Class 5 consists of all traveled highways," that the town or city has the duty to maintain regularly per RSA 229-5, section 6, and 231, column 3. One common misunderstanding about Class 5 highways is that Class 5 refers to some set of construction standards. It's not true. If a town or a city has a duty to maintain a road and does in fact maintain it, which the town had been doing until they made the changes and they told us this year, it's not your responsibility. It's the town's responsibility regardless of the condition of the road or how little maintenance is done. Once it's a Class 5 highway, it's a Class 5 highway. And that's what Worthly Hill Road is. The other thing is, is if the town would like to change the status of it, you have got to notify us. There was no notification of change of status. We worked with the town. The roundabout is in, there was a big exchange of land between us for the roundabout. The drainage along Lamson Avenue, we gave, we gave a drainage easement to the town at the rear of our property for all the drainage coming down Worthly Hill Road. The side of our property along Lamson Avenue was disturbed and it is still not back to the standards that it was. There was no temporary construction easement. There wasn't anything. The town has massively overstepped their bounds and we have been working with you. Again, I have been talking to Kyle and you since December regarding this. And we're here now in the public because nothing is being done. Nothing is being addressed. The, every time we get a comment from your, the town attorney, well, that really isn't what the RSA says. We have been asking for meetings with the town attorney since December. It hasn't happened. So per RSA 229-5, it's a Class 5 road. Additionally.
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes.
Typically, public comment is three minutes. And I just, we don't have anybody else and we have a pretty light schedule, but I think it would be important for us to at least have some consensus amongst the board members if we want to continue having the discussion, which typically we would have an appointment with somebody in this regard. And I don't mind continuing, I just think that we should, we should, we should at least agree to continue, just as a formality. And I don't mind. Just.
Well, I mean, you bringing that up, since you brought it up, I asked the rest of the board, I mean, I personally didn't have an issue with it. I mean, I understand that this, this is something that should be in an agenda item, but perhaps for some reason or another, she wasn't able to do it.
And I'm totally fine with that and I'm okay with proceeding. I just want to waive our three-minute time limit officially. That's all.
Okay.
That's all.
Any other comments? No?
Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's fine.
I'm fine with it. We have a few minutes before our next agenda item.
Well, to be an agenda item, we have been asking since December to, to straighten this out. And we've been trying to work with the Public Works Department. And it's adamant that that is our driveway, but you look at these plans, that is the public right-of-way. Additionally, for your information, the new intersection is an easement over the lot that is in the point and that easement has never been recorded. So where I say is the public right-of-way is truly the public right-of-way.
I have a question or, and a comment, if I may address. Hopefully, when we get these legal opinions, a lot of us don't have the, either the legal expertise or the knowledge to address some of these things, just so you know. So we do rely heavily on our counsel to say, okay, what's going on? And I think it's fair to say, because you're, you've obviously been around attorneys, some of us have been as well, that sometimes you get an opinion and it's right, sometimes it's not right, sometimes it's conflicting, you have to have a judge decide. That being said, we may be headed down that road where we need to have Drescher take a look, reexamine it based upon the Boviers' assertions. And I think that would be, to me, that'd be a fair thing to do, saying, okay, you wrote this opinion later, letter, the Boviers disagree, they believe X, Y, and Z, can you relook at this? And I'm with that. My one question that I had, again, in terms of right-of-ways, is that it's my understanding that like even my driveway might have a right-of-way of, you know, three, four, five feet where the town can, has a right-of-way. But that does not obligate the town's plow to go into that and to clear out the snow from that, as it's called, quote unquote, quote unquote, a, I guess the driveway connection. So that's kind of where I am. I don't understand, I understand what you're saying and I understand what Drescher is saying, but that's where I, I'm trying, I'm trying to struggle with this, saying, how is this different than my situation or anyone, anyone else's where you have, you know, four, five, six feet in where it's my responsibility, it's usually the heaviest snow, I might add, to go and, you know, to shovel it or plow it? Is this any different than that, even though it's in the right-of-way?
As we told Phil this winter, when he came over to look at it, we have no problem with that. Where, where that, where we always used to plow, we understand that. Where, where our driveway comes into the right-of-way of Worthly Hill Road. But the RSA does not mean that when the town made those changes and lengthened where, what we use as our driveway, that is not our driveway.
So your comment is that prior to that, the driveway ended at a certain spot. Now that driveway extension has been lengthened?
Well, the pavement has changed, but it's still Worthly Hill Road right-of-way. And per the book, regardless of what you or anybody else may call it, if we, if we had tried to do this or if we had, if we then said, "This is our land," you would really be not, and I know it's not my land. There have been no changes to the status of the road. And more importantly, the new intersection is not anything public.
Right.
Technically, people could park up and down the side of the entrance of your driveway, then?
Well.
I mean, I mean, I mean, being as close to a school zone, trying to.
Interestingly that you would say that and Kyle Queeram said that to us. But as people that live in the neighborhood know, there's, there's a town ordinance against that. So, but, but we were pretty insulted when that was said to us. Well, people could walk through there. People can walk through there. It is the town right-of-way. We're not, we're not asking for anything different. We are saying, this is the town right-of-way. It is your responsibility to maintain it. It was built by the town, it was paid for by the town, it is the town's, and there have been no changes.
In order to expedite this, in terms of having reexamination by town council, you've obviously entered into the record, the questions that you have or the items in which you'd want the town council to take another look at. That's what I'm gathering. Is there anything else that you'd like us to do?
Well, every time I talk to Sue and we get an answer from the town council, we waited, what, April till July for the first answer? It was a long time. I understand what you're saying, but we're not coming here out of the blue. We have really been trying to solve this.
I hear you.
Not here. So yes, we would like to, we have been asking us to have a meeting with the town council. And nothing, nothing. We're not hearing anything. That's why I'm here.
Nick?
Just a quick question. How would you like to see this resolved?
Well, basically, right now, we'd like to see the town maintain it.
When you say maintain?
Maintain it, plow it. You know? That's the big thing. I mean, it was, if you, I don't know if you're familiar with this intersection, I know some people are. When we came, when I came home one night and we had had a lot of snow, there was nowhere for me to park my car. I couldn't park it in front of my driveway because I'd be parking Lamson Avenue. I couldn't park it in the easement that the town's supposed to have because that's the major access to Worthly Hill Road. And then Worthly Hill Road is so narrow. There was no place that I could even park my car to get in. So, so that is, that's the thing, is it's really, is that maintenance of it. And if the town's not going to make any other changes, all we're saying is maintain it. It's yours. Plow it. If something happened, there's still a sewer line through there, there's still a water line through there. Anything with regards to that, it is the town's. If you would like to do something else, you haven't done anything. It is still a Class 5 road and as such, it is still your responsibility, no matter what it looks like.
So you want it to be like a dead-end street?
That's what it would be. I mean, clearly.
Dead-end street. That's, is that, that's what I'm gathering from this.
Actually, it is, well, it, that would, that's completely different. The maintenance of it is completely different than from what we would want it. We've got frontage on Wallace Road, South Mast Street, we, you know, about Lamson Avenue. So it's not, it's not that. It's just that when the whole project started, we were told that, well, the town could give you the land. And at that time, we said, well, the town can't give us the land. It has to go to town vote, it has to go to town meeting, and nothing has been done. So there has been no changes. So, and we haven't, you know, and, and everything that was done was for the benefit of the town. The roundabout was for the benefit of the town, for safety. The Worthly Hill Road intersection was for the benefit of the town. Changing our driveway, we could have said, no, just keep the pavement the way it was. It wouldn't have mattered because it is still the town right-of-way. So our parcel hasn't changed. We still have frontage on Worthly Hill Road. That orange line is Worthly Hill Road. So we would really like to solve this, but, and we're here because we are just not getting any, we would really just like to sit down with the town attorney, Public Works, whatever, and get this solved, but this.
I. Because it involves legal, is this not, I mean, we, we're having a discussion, but in terms of what the board wants to do, I believe that's a non-public discussion as to how we're going to proceed.
Yes.
Based in regards legal. I mean, I'm inclined, you know, I'm inclined to have counsel reexamine it, but I think those discussions would be in a non-public setting, not a public.
Well, I think at this point, that's what we need to do. I mean, I think she, she's given us this. Okay? She's pointed out some concerns, some issues, made a few points, and I think we need to take a comeback.
Just, just one other question. Let's just say if it was to say, hey, we're going to plow this.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just trying to get an idea, when I was saying dead-end street, you follow where I'm going, because eventually they're going to push in straight. Is this what you're looking for? Is someone to push straight in and leave a pile after the curve?
Yes. Which, when it first happened, if you're up there, it's a logical solution. I mean, you come down Worthly Hill Road and just keep going right on straight and you push it right, right? That is all town land.
Okay. And let me just ask the other question, because I don't know how wide the driveway is and how wide a plow is, et cetera. I mean, and I take it because it's right-of-way, it wouldn't matter about the grass on either way, but I mean, also you'd want people to be sensitive about that. I mean, is that an issue or?
It wouldn't be.
You follow where I'm going.
I do, I do.
In other words, you're trying, I'm trying to ask the questions that I'd be like, well, is this going to be a concern after that? We're looking for like when, I know when someone plows the driveway, a lot of times they might run skids or bump it up because they're worried about grass, they're worried about where they're going to put the piles. I don't know, you know, and I understand what Mr. Lookman-Gross is saying, but I'm mostly trying to figure out, you know, what this means going down the road if it was another avenue, the other way.
Lamson Avenue is only 12 feet of pavement. So that, and that's really supposed to be a small plow. And I'm not, and if our driveway then was 12 feet, Worthly Hill Road is not certainly a wide pavement. So, but you're right. What?
I'm just trying to get an idea with the pictures.
Yeah, you know what? Every year, we all have that, no matter what, where the grass goes up to it, it's still in town land. But the, the deal is, that's our, that's, we have nowhere to get off the road in a bad situation. That whole point area is supposed to be an easement to the town and the town did pile a lot of snow in that corner. And that's fine. I mean, it's, it's more, right now, it truly is the principle of it, is that if it's, if no, if there aren't going to be any changes, then there weren't any changes. It's town, it should be maintained. And if you would like to make changes, then please make them. But right now, nothing has changed, except no maintenance.
Yeah, because I'm just trying to envision from, I used to plow and you could tell.
Oh, okay.
If someone was to come down, and I don't know, I don't know how you have your driveway done, if it's snow blow or plow.
Beautiful.
It's a, I mean, no, is it snow blowed or is it?
No, yeah, it is.
It's by snow blower. Okay. No, you do it with a snow blower?
Yes.
Okay. And this is just, this is just me, okay, speaking? Because I'm kind of fussy with my snow blower in my yard. And all I, all I can see is this beautiful snow blow driveway and all of a sudden, this And all of a sudden, this plow truck comes in, pushes straight, and it's probably going to have to go past the curve so many feet because they got to allow for things. I'm, I'm just wondering what you're envisioning in this process.
I am envisioning that they're.
You follow saying it's not going to be as, as nice as what was probably if there was the road. Okay, alright.
We realize that. And we, Phil came and we said that. We, that's all we're saying is plow that public tra- public right of way in front so we can get out of our driveway. And we look at our driveway as ending at the orange line. So if you would, if you would decide to, we have been asking for a meeting. So, and I don't think it needs to be, I think it needs to be with council. I really do think. But that's what we have been asking for because, again, all the answers that are given to us really do not reflect what the RSA say.
Nick? Well, one of the things I, I would, maybe if we could also have Carl and, and maybe Megan meet with us too. Because I, I know a while there was some con- not controversy, but there were questions about this going up Wallace of making that sharp right. So maybe this is, if we're, if we're doing anything, maybe we want to reexamine having that come straight through again. Um, so that, you know, and change the traffic so that as people are coming up Wallace, they just go right up Worley here. There's an intersection here with a stop sign. Something where, you know, maybe engineering, they can take a look at it. If it's still going to stay a class five road, maybe we look at keeping that connection straight through. Then it's easier to plow. They just go right through, plow it and.
So you could come straight out of Lamson or take a slip.
Exactly where that orange, with those orange lines, or just go right to Wallace. So that's just a, a right-hand turn right there.
Well, no, I think, yeah, well, down here at the lower portion, but what, what you, make this similar to what it is at Cumberland Farms in Canardo. Right, one way coming up is, is.
I think the concern though was they didn't want anyone coming down this section because it's too close.
It would be a one-way. That section would just be a one-way.
Yeah, just like it is.
So that would ease that turning for large trucks.
It may kill two birds with one stone.
Right, right, very much.
But I think that's something Megan or Carl would have to look at, engineering-wise, to see.
Yeah, that's cool. I think first and foremost, for what I'm hearing from Cynthia is that we need, I guess, more timely resolution to this. So I think she's looking for an answer, but an answer sooner rather than later because it's already been hanging out there for six months or longer. So whatever we do, I just think we just, it needs to be in an expedited fashion so we have resolution within a month so that there's some peace of mind knowing what's, what's going to be going on with snow removal, you know? So that, that's how I think we should, whatever we do, it just needs to be done quickly.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions, Mr. Wilson?
No, no, I just, I just, the only way we are getting heard, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yeah, it does.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other members of the public? Uh, if not, we have a 6:30 appointment with Bill Wynn. And Bill. Lawrence, yours.
Good evening and thank you for the appointment to come before the board this evening. I do, uh, my purpose is to, simply to go over some procedural questions I may have with the board about the meeting that took place on June 27th with regard to the appointments of the Cable Access Committee openings. And I do not intend to address any other applicants specifically. That is not my place here. And I certainly respect that, but I do have procedural questions. And if I may move along with that. I'd like to first start with Selectmen Capceno. On the 27th, you were very versed in the procedure of how to nominate the applicants and get the votes going. Matter of fact, you spent quite a bit of time going over the procedure. My question first all, first of all, though, is specifically, where did the procedure come from? Who wrote it?
Procedure was developed, um, date, I want to say 2008, I believe. And it was developed primarily by, I believe Selectman Caprio did the draft of the policies and procedure. And then the board reviewed it and tweaked it. It was accepted by the board after that. But I think the bulk of the work was done by Selectman Caprio at the time.
Okay, and when it was put in, prior to it being put into place, uh, when was that decision made to put it in place and?
Off the top of my head, I don't have that date.
You don't know? Any other answers to this from other selectmen, by chance, when this procedure was actually, it was decided by the board to put it in place?
I would probably say it was 2008, 2009 would be when the rules of, it wasn't just this, it was all of our rules of procedure. It was just pretty much codified as to, these are guidelines for the board to handle its business. There's nothing that's set in statute. It's just, it's just, it's just our own set of rules that we choose to follow, or at least try to, try to follow.
Thank you. I find it very amazing, though, that it was your own set of rules and you're very confused over it, but we'll leave that aside. In 1.3.1 of the procedure, um, there's a provision in there as applicants are being brought up to have a discussion on qualifications. And my question to each of you on the board, with the exception of Chairman Devanza at this time, is, um, why wasn't any of that done?
Uh, I, I have a question. Bill?
Yes.
Um, your request to be here, to have a discussion?
Yes.
Um, I wasn't aware that it was a request to ask these types of, this, this format. I thought you were going to have a two-way discussion here, not just be asking questions.
My response to that, Chairman, is an opportunity to come in on public comment does not allow for engagement with the selectmen, okay? An opportunity for comment to engage with the selectmen is by procedure. An appointment is requested. It was granted, and the subject matter was specifically having to do with the June 27th meeting. And, and that was all documented with Sudas Russo. So that's why I'm here.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Just, Mr. Wynn, it was originally adopted June 30th, 2008.
2008, and it took all this time to, till June to put it into place?
No, it was originally adopted June 30th.
Alright, so it was adopted, but not used. Is, is that the understanding I have from each of you? I mean, obviously it wasn't used until June 27th.
I mean, I think, I think we adopt policies and, or, it's not policies, we adopt these types of rules of how we're going to conduct our meetings. And sometimes the scenarios don't come into play. And I think in this particular case, I'm not sure what the rest of the board feels, it was just, it was one of those scenarios whereby we had three people vying for two positions. And I think there was a lot of confusion as to, um, you know, how do you go about narrowing it down to just two people? So I think that was, that's my understanding of it.
In, in any event, um, can we go back to the question I have, please, with reference to 1.3.1? Why was there no discussion amongst this board about the qualifications of any of the applicants?
If I may, 1.3.1, during the appointment process, each Board of Selectmen member shall have the opportunity to speak. Doesn't require us to speak. It just provides us with the opportunity if we would like to.
I understand that. But from the public's point of view, I'm not here for me. I'm here for the public as well. As you know, I have a media publication and, um, the answers are not there. So in an answer to the public, why was, there was no discussion on the applicants and their qualifications? I'd like an answer to that, please.
Well, I, I, if I, if I can for the board, I think, Bill, what it comes down to. Three people applied for two positions. Each person is qualified, meets the qualifications to serve on that committee. And that's what the board had to deal with.
Three people applied for four positions, okay?
Three people applied for two.
Full member.
Membership.
That's, that's correct, but there were four total, okay?
But we're dealing with full membership positions that the people.
I, I, I understand that. But again, I asked the question, why was none of the qualifications discussed for the benefit of the public? And I will address that to you, Chairman Devanza.
Because I, I believe that each person who applied met the qualifications.
That's, that's good. I, I, I don't disagree with that at all, okay? However, how did you arrive at the decision you arrived at based on your own personal knowledge of who the applicants were? Was there any discussion prior to the meeting amongst the group, either in public or non-public session? Because I couldn't find it either way. I mean, how did, how did you arrive at this decision? That's what I want to know.
I, I can speak to my own decision because we did not speak. And I think you see that almost every week when we meet, that we don't meet or discuss items prior. I looked at three individuals. There were two full positions, two alternate positions. I looked at the incumbents. My intent was to vote in the two incumbents to the full board positions and the individual that we received a, a new application for, for the alternate. I didn't need discussion for that. In my mind, it was very clear how I was going to vote.
Thank you very much for that input, Selectman Capceno. I really appreciate that. Um, Selectman Gross, one quick question for you. When you did abstain from the vote on two occasions, uh, it's been my, um, understanding and also my experience, uh, being on the planning board and the zoning board at times, that when someone does abstain, they give a reason. Is there a conflict or, or what? And they usually state that reason. Any reason why you did not state any such reason?
Um, I believe I did comment on it, but if not, I'll comment now. Um, as Selectman Devanza said, I do think that we had three people for, vying for two positions. Um, I looked at it, Bill, um, from, from this perspective. I, I believe that you were qualified along with the other two individuals. Um, my concern is, is that, um, you and I have had, I guess, a mixed past in terms of, um, outside of the public, uh, arena. Um, I don't think it's, I think it's pretty fair to say that, um, you know, you have printed things or published things on your website, which was adverse to me, right, wrong, or indifferent. Most recently, you have also posted kind of a mockery of our, one of our meetings. Um, and I felt that if I voted, it might be, if I even voted, and I voted in the negative, then I'd be accused of voting, you know, what my, um, my feelings were towards you on a personal basis rather than on a professional basis. So with that, I abstained from the vote because I don't want anybody to be tainted by the fact that, while I think that, um, your abilities or your qualifications on, um, this commission are certainly acceptable to fill the role, um, I, I, I abstained because of the fact that I think our individual past might, might be compromised by that. That's why I abstained.
Thank you for your answer, Selectman Gross. At the same time, my response to that, when I've met people in the public, uh, arena, I have always said that I, I like you. Um, you do a wonderful job for the town. You're an excellent selectman. I don't agree with you all the time. However, when something goes awry, I have a media publication and I bang it out, okay? Good or indifferent. And I will say with the 86 video productions I've produced in this town over the last 18 months, okay? That's pretty good qualification. But on the other hand, at the same time, that's 86 versus one. So when you put it on a scale, it's kind of lopsided. The reason for you to, um, and I appreciate you explaining that, is of a personal nature and not of a qualification nature. That's where we disagree again, and I think you made a mistake there. Selectman Devanza, uh, Chairman Devanza, if I may go to you, you made a, uh, comment to the Gostown News that you did not, uh, vote in favor of Wynn because you had your reasons and for the benefit of the public. And I have no trouble at all, um, what you say, just simply, you know, Scott was very frank. Um, and I would appreciate it if, for the benefit of the public, you would tell the public what those reasons were.
Well, I don't recall saying that to the Gostown News.
You did. It's in print.
But I'll tell you why, Bill.
Please do.
Three people applied for two positions.
Mm-hmm.
I know all three people. I like all three people. All three people are qualified. One person can't make it. You happen to be the one who didn't make it.
Okay. So what you're saying is you made your decision based on my qualifications?
No, I didn't say that.
Alright, so you didn't make your decision based on qualifications either?
I didn't say that either, Bill. I'll repeat myself.
Please do.
Three people applied for two positions.
That's correct.
All three met the qualifications. One person cannot make it. You happen to be that person.
But yet you made your decision based on qualifications.
I didn't say that. I did not say that.
You're not making any sense, Chairman.
I, two people can only make it. Three people applied. One person can't make it. They all are qualifying. You're all qualified. No matter which one I don't vote for, that person can't make it. You happen to be that person. I, I apologize.
There's no need to apologize.
Oh, I'm just telling you. You're asking me why, and I'm telling you, that's what it is.
I don't believe it, Chairman.
And perhaps you don't like to hear what I'm saying.
I will have one more question, uh, for the group. My reputation in this community is very strong. It's been damaged by an individual in the political arena, the business arena, and the public arena. And I'll reference Kathy Ball, who I interviewed just a few weeks ago, who's going to be interviewed by a staff writer on my publication very soon. And the question.
Bill, I gotta stop you for one second, if I may, Mr. Chair. As long as, I just want to reiterate, we cannot bring a lot of names in or be careful where you go.
I, I, I understand that, but this is fact. It's already been verified, so there's nothing that, there's no what-ifs or anything like that, and I appreciate your input. But, but at the same time, there are two people in this town hall that I have documentation on that have been approached by an individual who has been saying some very awful things about me, that the police are investigating me, that I sent a nasty card to someone. Did any of you receive any of that information from any individual in this town? Were you approached by any person without answering a name? I just want to make sure that my reputation was not damaged and was part of your decision. So if you could honestly answer, yes or no, have you been approached by any person in this community about my reputation, trying to show you a Christmas card and lying to you about me being investigated by the police? If you could each answer that question for me, I would appreciate it, yes or no?
Mr. Chair, I would urge that we don't respond to that question. And I say that because I, I think it's already implied based upon Mr. Wynn's website, who these two individuals are, and I think.
It's a publication. It's not a website.
Um, it's a publication. I apologize.
It's fine.
I just think it's, this is the exact reason why we wanted to go into non-public session with Mr. Wynn to talk about it. And I don't have any problem airing, what we did before was, I'm totally acceptable with it. I'm accountable to you. I am. I'm, I'm an elected official. I'm accountable to all the citizens. But when we crossed the line of potentially getting in for a tit-for-tat with another citizen, and, and I think it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out who those other two individuals are. They're, they're posted on your publication. So by, by any of us answering that question, it opens up a huge can of worms, and, and I don't think we should answer it. That's just my opinion.
I respect that, uh, that. What I would like to do is close out my meeting at this point with you on. I want to thank you very, very much for having me here. Um, I probably may have some more questions at a future date. But however, at the same time, I would like to make a request to the board to meet with you in private session. If we could do that, and I'll wait for an appointment on that. And I want to greet everybody. You're doing a great job. We have a wonderful community, community here, and I wish you all well. Thank you.
Thank you.
6:45, Brian Rose. You're on. I'm sorry, no. Why Chief O'Brien? I apologize. Boy, I'm not doing too well tonight, huh?
He's like, oh, I almost got home early.
Yeah, I know. Sorry about that.
Didn't mean to hide behind the big sign in the back, back of the room.
That's okay. That's why I didn't see you back there.
You want to hide behind this?
And you know, Brian is so tall, he's, you know, dominates the meeting room.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
Uh, once again, I come to you, uh, every, every year since, uh, 2002, the Department of Homeland Security has a Assistance to Fire Fighters Grant Program. And, uh, every year, the federal government through FEMA and the Department of Homeland Security has been isolating, uh, millions and millions of dollars towards assisting fi- uh, fire departments. We, we've taken advantage of that throughout the years. 2002, uh, we, we received a grant, the Gostown received a grant for, uh, air packs for firefighters. And lately, we've received, uh, staffing and, uh, the ladder truck grant and so on. Uh, this, this time, this, this time around, there's approximately 404 million dollars available in this AFG grant. Uh, approximately 370, 70, 370 million of it is tied into projects to what we're looking at today. Uh, to, so for this point, I would like to, uh, ask for the board's consideration to go ahead and apply for, for the Assistance to Firefighter Grants Program on several projects that we're looking at. The grant application is, is to, is open right now, and, uh, it closes up on Friday, September 9th. So we need to, the reason why I'm meeting with you is we need to move forward in, in completing that application if that's the way we want to go. Uh, two or actually three projects that we're looking at is, first one is replacing the Forrester vehicle that we have. Uh, we currently have a 1968 Jeep Ford, uh, Jeep Forrester vehicle. Uh, this vehicle is, has served the town quite well. In fact, I believe it was an old civil, civil defense vehicle uh, before it was, was handed over to the town, uh, years ago. Uh, this vehicle is getting, is getting tired, and, uh, we feel that a replacement is necessary. In fact, it's slated for, slated for replacement, uh, coming up in 2012 in CIP. Uh, this way, this way it'll ta- take some of that grant funds if possible. Uh, we estimate the replacement cost of this vehicle is about $120,000. vehicle is about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And this actually will be a combined brush, we call it brush attack vehicle under the, the grant program. And what's unique about this is currently, right now, the Forrester vehicle is, is used primarily for that, for brush fires, wildland fires. This vehicle would actually be, be able to use year-round as a year-round first attack vehicle also. Its main purpose about, obviously, is for wildland fires and purposes like that. But for example, if we do have a snowstorm and we have quite a few driveways that are, that are long and steep, and fire apparatus can't make it up during, when they're snow-covered, this vehicle would be able to get up, get to the scene and, and offer some assistance anyway, even though it wouldn't be a, a full fire engine. So that's the first project. And the, the other projects are more for modification of the fire stations. We've gone for the, for the first project before in the grant process and, and was turned down. We thought we had, we had a, we had a solid project, but we feel with technology, the overall price of the, the projects that we're looking at has gone down a little bit. So we're hoping that it's more of a cost-effective program in the eyes of the, the grant managers. The, this project is the Vehicle Exhaust Removal System for Stations eighteen and nineteen. And the cost of the, of these systems is sixty-six thousand dollars for both stations. And the last section of the modification of the fire stations would be to install fire sprinklers into Stations eighteen and nineteen. And for the cost of doing those, those stations is a hundred ninety-eight thousand five hundred dollars. This grant program, because of our, our population base is less than twenty thousand dollars, the grant cash match is five percent, five percent of what is awarded. We've, we've experienced in the past with the AFG grant program that, for example, with the, the ladder, I'll, I'll give you a ladder grant, for example. We asked for, I believe it was nine hundred thousand dollars. They said, okay, we'll award the grant, but we're only going to award you seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Will you take it? And we did. And that's why we have a new ladder truck. This may happen again with these programs too, where for the Vehicle Exhaust Removal Systems, they says, well, we'll give us, we'll give you sixty thousand dollars. So it depends, then the match is regulated for, off of what the federal funds are actually awarded to you. So any questions at this point?
Is this three grants all packed, or is it all three items packaged in one grant?
What's unique about, what's actually good about this grant is these, these items are, are applied for together, but they're seen, seen separately within the grant process. So one could be successful, like for example, the, the Forrester vehicle could be successful, and the other ones may, may go down.
So it's one, it's one application, but the reviewers break it into three parts?
Correct. Correct. In this particular case, the, they may lump in the modification, the fire stations together because it's a, it's a similar, similar animal. So, so they'll, they'll probably be evaluated together.
Are we allowed to make three applications, though? If I wanted to recommend that these be three applications?
I believe you could make two, there'd be two, two applications because, again, the classifica, classifying the two requests, and I could look into further. One would be for, for a vehicle.
Different categories.
And this would be the category for the modification of the fire stations.
Building, building infrastructure.
Right.
Thank you.
It's my understanding that all of these, clearly, the vehicle, the Forrester vehicle is in CIP. And then the other two, the Vehicle Exhaust and the Sprinkler Systems, I'm, I'm going to assume that they are in part of the upgrades to the facilities. So that would, it would be a component of that, correct?
Correct.
So I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that we're, it's, it's in, it was in the pipeline. This isn't something that we're just all, oh, let's do this. It's like, no, we've talked about, the, the vehicle itself has been in CIP for years.
Correct.
And we have talked about the exhaust removal for the last couple of years. And we've also talked about, I know this sounds kind of crazy not to have a sprinkler system in your fire station, but that has also been talked about, and it's a component of the, the station refurbishment. So I think in that respect, I don't have a problem. If we can get grant funds for something that we've already planning for and potentially would have spent tax dollars on, I'm all for it. So I'd, I'd make a motion to allow the Fire Chief to proceed with the application of grants to the U.S. Department of Homeland Security for the three items mentioned.
Second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Any questions, real questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Just a quick comment. If it could, Chief, once those are submitted, could you print them out and provide them to the board just for review?
Absolutely.
After, after they're submitted. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I just had a question. When do you anticipate bid awards for this grant? Do they come out before the budget ends, or?
I, I don't anticipate it coming out. Probably awards will begin probably early next year.
Oh, okay.
But they're, you're just going on the tracker, record for the past ten years. We're looking at next year. So again, we would have probably had to sit down and part, part of the, part of the budget process to see if awarded, where would the match come from?
Right. That is wondering.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Now it's Brian.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. For the public, I guess, mostly. My name's Brian Rose. I'm the Planning and Zoning Administrator for the town. I also sit on the Rails to Trails Committee, and that committee is made up of a, a group of town staff as well as community representatives. And the reason I'm here before you tonight is to present some information regarding the Transportation, Transportation Enhancement Grant Project, or the TE Grant Project, as many of us know it by, that was awarded and has already been accepted by the Selectmen. The TE Grant Project application was for three hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred sixty dollars. That's the total project cost. It's almost four hundred thousand dollars. And the town was awarded the grant for approximately, well, for eighty percent of that amount, or three hundred sixteen thousand, two hundred eighty-eight dollars. The town will be required to pay the matching twenty percent of that, and, and that dollar amount comes to seventy-nine thousand, seventy-two dollars. And that money has actually been set aside from the Parks and Recreation Impact Fee Account that the town holds. Now, just information for the public again, the Parks and Recreation Impact Fee Account is basically an account that's set up that every time a, a new home is built in the town, we collect an impact fee for that home. And impact fees are gathered for roads, schools, parks and recreation, as well as police and fire services. And so that money, over time, gets saved up, and, and that's what would be used to be paid towards the matching dollars for this grant. It would not come from any tax dollars, and tax dollars are not going to be raised in order to pay for the, for the rest of that project. So the project for which that money was sought is to design and construct four rail, rail trail crossings. And I say crossings, and three of those are road crossings, and one of those is more of a gully crossing. So that money is, is dedicated for those four projects. And once the grant was awarded and accepted, the town began working on an RFQ, sent it out to the public, and nine firms ended up responding to that RFQ. We had four of them put onto a shortlist from a committee of Selectman Dave Pierce, myself, Carl Querem, and Megan Terrio, our town engineer. And we interviewed each of those groups and, or firms, and we selected one out of the, out of those four after interviewing them. That group was Vanas Hang and Bruce Lynn Incorporated, or VHB Incorporated. Once that group was selected, they then gave us their scope of, scope of services document and draft contract. We went through that document. We reviewed it. It took a little while to go back and forth with them because they originally came to us with a scope of work in the amount of about a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, which was much more than what we had anticipated the design and, and construction services, supervision, construction supervision services to be. We had expected it to be more in the range of fifty or maybe sixty thousand. And so we, we worked back and forth with them to get that pared down a little bit. And ultimately, the estimate got down to seventy-one thousand, two hundred ninety-six, which is less than half of the original amount. So that's a lot better to look at than a hundred fifty-five thousand at least. However, this is not the entire amount of the cost of what will be required for construction services and design. They had to remove the fourth phase of what, what they would call Design and Construction Supervision Services at the request of the DOT. Department of Transportation has certain requirements and a, a certain setup of how you're supposed to take care of this project. And they, they just said, well, the last phase of this is not going to be able to, to be part of this first grant project that you're, the, the design and the construction supervision. So basically, that was an amount totaling maybe eight or ten thousand dollars. And so the amount that we had gotten just before the final amount was in the range of eighty or eighty-two thousand dollars. So that being removed, we're down to a little over seventy-one thousand. The Rail Trail Committee, which I mentioned in the beginning, is a, is a group of town staff and committee member, uh, community members. They met last Friday and discussed this contract and the amount. And they voted to make a recommendation to the Selectmen based on that information that they approve the Design and Construction Supervision Services to Vanas Hang and Bruce Lynn Incorporated in the amount of seventy-one thousand, two hundred ninety-six dollars as part of the two thousand and ten TE Grant Project. And that's my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
Any questions?
Try to answer any.
Okay, Scott?
Well, the biggie for me is we have a contractor, where, this is an engineering firm, who came in at a hundred and forty thousand originally?
Hundred fifty-five thousand.
Hundred and fifty-five. And for all intents and purposes, if I throw back the twelve thousand dollars of the Phase Four, they're at about eighty-three. So I, I guess, almost half. I get concerned when, when there's a firm that bids one fifty-five and it goes to eighty-three. What are they not doing? What are they doing? Do they, you know, I'm, and then how did, how did the bid process go? When they, because they were selected, I guess, for this, then they give us their scope of work. I'm like, kind of...
I'd like to pick up the beat on that for you. The firm was selected because they were qual, under qualifications, which had nothing to do with the potential cost of their fees. And we, out of the nine firms, we felt that they were the most qualified to take on this project. Every step that the town takes has to be reviewed and vetted by the Department of Transportation. So they reviewed the process by how we selected the one firm.
Okay.
We passed. We received a scope of the contract from the firm and their potential fee, you know, how they're earning the money for doing the work. And you're right, it was, the scope was our original scope for the size of the project, I'll mention in a moment, and a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, give or take a few thousand. At that point, we reduced the scope of the project and told the firm to go back and reappraise what their fees might be. We went from a full-fledged stoplight system, you know, red, green, yellow, push button, stop the traffic. We took that away. The crossings would be painted stripes on the asphalt and signage and rapidly blinking, blinking yellow lights. The next change was rather than put a bridge across the former Henry Bridge Road gully, twenty-three-foot-deep gully. We, essentially, we read the tea leaves because the majority of the applicants of the nine firms, they all advised us the most economical solution is to fill it, fill the valley. So we took that out of the scope of the potential design, no bridge. And that took a lot of design out of the picture.
Okay.
Soil assessment, drilling, you know, bore test pits, bridge design, abutment design, all that went by the wayside. They then came back in with this, oh, on the order of eighty-something thousand dollars for the fee. We submitted that contract proposal and fee to DOT. They came back and said there was a minor change within the scope of the contract. The firm took that scope out. And they also said Phase Four, which was the supervision of the construction, had to be a separate fee later down the road. So that, with the action before the board tonight is to look at the design, the fee associated with the design of the four projects. And it downed the order of seventy-one thousand. So we're, and the, the team at Public Works reviewing it felt that that was acceptable. The Rail Trail Committee then favorably endorsed it to this board.
Okay. I have a follow-up. And I guess it has to do with, so I think that was a great explanation, by the way, as to why it went from one fifty-five down to eighty-three for all four phases because the scope, we went from bridges to filling it in, and I'm good with all that. Now, if I could just chat a little bit about the, the process. So the process has, we, we look at all of the potential candidates who are, who are vying for this job as engineering and oversight. And then from there, a set of criteria was established, and you selected the most qualified, who you felt was the most qualified candidate to put out, to, to give us, I guess, a scope of work on it. And I guess my question is this, how do I know that, that numbers two and three, who were the second and third most qualified, who may have been, you know, an A minus or, or, you know, two A minuses opposed to an A, would not have come in with a scope of work that was fifty thousand dollars? And it seemed to, I, I guess to me, I'm looking at this from the perspective of, and now is this like a DOT thing that you have to get pre-qualification?
That's how the rules work.
That's how the rules work. So...
The ones paying eighty percent of the bill dictate the process, and that was their process.
That's how the DOT implements the federal use of federal money.
And that's a great example of why we're in the pickle that we're in on so many things, because it makes absolutely no sense. So yes, they're highly qualified, but they also may be the most expensive.
And I'll, I'll pick up on your, I'll pick up on your theme. Had we not, had we been so unhappy with a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar fee, we simply wrote the, the firm saying, we're sorry, you're way too high. We're just going to drop you from consideration, and we're going to go to firm number two and try to enter into them for a scope and, and fee. The rules of this process are that we could not go back. You know, if firm number two came in and they were even more money, at that point, we're not allowed to go back to firm number one. So there's, there's a lot of rules because it's, we're spending federal money... So there's, there's a lot of rules because it's, it's, we're spending federal money under the control of the state.
I hear.
Nick has a question.
Yep. Just a question, I'm looking at the contract. Under Task E3, um, if, if we've made a decision to go with a fill, can we remove the portion where they review and validate the comparison between the trail bridge and using fill and evaluation of the two primary alternatives?
We won't put fill in that though.
F-I-L.
Oh, okay.
Because it looks like they're looking at two alternatives, whereas we've already decided it's going to be one.
Uh, one of the comments that came back from, uh, DOT, on the review of the contract, is they, they specifically asked that paragraph to be left in because they do want, uh, an engineering analysis that a bridge is, um, very, more expensive than we want.
Or less feasible.
But they want, they want a cursory look at the bridge analysis.
And follow-up on that?
Yeah.
And just the last thing, on the, the Route 114 crossing, can we be more clear, um, because we talk about per advice from the town, raised pedestrian refuge median islands will not be pursued. Can we, can we be more clear that we are not looking for pedestrian stoplights? Because it talks about pedestrian actuated flashing beacons, and then at Henry Bridge Road, it talks about rapid flashing sign beacons, which kind of say they're two different things there.
We could have the firm clarify the, the wording of the two beacons because it's our intention to have the same type.
Okay.
Well, I think that's your point is that...
Right, that they should be the same.
Yes.
When you read them, you think that they're...
Two different, exactly.
Is it possible for us to get a credit or an offset in our matching, um, and use, uh, fill, not Devanza, but use fill, F-I-L-L, from the, uh, land that we purchased a couple of years ago? Because there is quite a bit of, of materials that could be used there, and could we get a, could we get a credit on our matching, not use as much impact fee money and take that material in kind?
Yes. Um, the answer to that question, uh, that would be a construction cost
Right.
of gravel. So we're not, we're not bidding the construction of the rail trail, which is moving gravel.
This is engineering, but...
This is, so, there's a second, there's a follow-up to your question. In order to provide adequate line of sight for the Henry Bridge Road crossing from behind Irving towards the prison, the inside of that curve, the, the earth on the inside of the curve may have to be reduced by getting an easement from the owner of that property, slope easement. There's so much soil to be removed from that one site.
That you could use it for.
That soil could be trucked four hundred yards down the trail, dumped in the valley. In addition, uh, the Director of Public Works has already acknowledged that we could take fill from, uh, the land we recently purchased and continue, you know, whatever more is required to fill in that, build an embankment. And, uh, it's, the design firm may not, they may give us an option for a level straight through, fill in the valley, or it could be a slight swale.
Yeah. These, uh, actuators that you're talking, these light actuators, are they like, are they like, like stop sign type things where they light above the ground?
The actuators?
No, the actuators, where you press the pressing button, the lights I'm talking about.
Okay.
It's a sensor activated, motion sensor activated.
The other, here's, again, this is a lot different than where you used to live and where I just came from on vacation, but there was a lot of crosswalks, and again, it's Southern California, and they don't plow there, but they, you pressed a button and they were like lights in the road, that, I mean, they were bright, and you knew that someone was trying to cross. Um, and again, I don't know if you can do that as part of a, the design thing, but if it's possible to use those, again, I don't know if the plows would rip them out, but...
I've, I've seen the ads for those, uh, on the internet, uh...
They're unbelievable.
That's, that's up to the design firm right now to offer options on how to do the lights for the crossing.
Okay.
I'm familiar with the, uh, on a pole, a set of rapidly flashing lights.
Right.
Um, I've seen the video where the lights are embedded in the asphalt and flashing. We never see any snow on those roads.
I know, that's why I don't know if the application works in, in a...
It may, may work fine in Florida.
Right.
But that's, uh, that's an issue for the design firm.
There was also one thing too, is my understanding is, as far as the crosswalks, after they're built, we own them as far as maintenance and repair.
Mm-hmm.
So, that might be something very nice and neat to have, but it might also be very costly for us.
Yeah.
We have, uh, we have implemented, when this, the scope and the fee of this, uh, design firm has been reviewed by DOT, we have implemented their changes, but we have not presented the changed package, which we're seeing tonight, back to TO, DOT for their final review. And then, based on that, they would give us a formal letter that says, it's a notice to proceed with, uh, with the contract. So, uh, that would be part of a, a motion that I'll present in a moment to, uh, that it's based on the final review by DOT, and, uh, you know, we've already, have taken, we've implemented all their changes.
Mr. Chair, so any motions needed, I assume?
Just a quick question, in timeframe going forward, I mean, honestly, it's, yeah, I know you don't control the timeframe, but what would be your expectation timeframe going forward?
The goal is, uh, design in this year, um, easement negotiations with private abutters this year. And, uh, the design, there'll be a public information meeting. And, uh, if all that goes well, the, uh, requests for, for bids for the construction would be, uh, March and April of next year, with the construction in next year's construction season, summer.
Thank you.
Okay, Scott?
Is the motion needed, Mr. Chair?
Yep, I think we do.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Board of Selectmen Chairman to sign the contract with VHP as presented this evening.
With?
VHB.
VHB.
VHB and, uh, I would, uh, contingent upon a final review by DOT.
Okay, contingent upon a final review by DOT, added to that.
There a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Who was in favor?
Aye.
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 unanimous.
The second was by you, Selectmen Fornia?
Yep.
Oh, and then I do that. Gets him in the minutes, right?
I don't need to have...
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay, next item is Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, your weekly meeting schedules in your packets. Tomorrow evening is the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary Planning Committee, and Wednesday is Conservation Commission. Consensus folder tonight is AP warrants.
Question on that, the two-fiftieth committee?
Yeah.
Is that the planning committee or the volunteer?
No, it's not a planning committee, it's a volunteer meeting.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're just having a meeting with their volunteers.
You're done planning, I would expect.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, there's still a quote, so...
It's the second of, uh, it's a, it's a makeup session for volunteers.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make that distinction on the calendar.
Thank you. Uh, consensus folder includes AP warrants, employee status report, a resignation of a police officer, event permit for St. Anselm football games and alumni weekend, and a notice of lien on map twenty-one lot five.
We need a motion and accept it?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion, saying none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
I think we should all go to a St. Anselm's football game, though, to show our support for St. Anselms, so, Steve is gonna, yes, Steve is gonna arrange the tailgate for us in the next couple of weeks, so you guys are, we're all invited to go.
Okay, don't forget, it's gotta be posted.
All right, there's no alcohol, right, there, right? In their tailgate?
Yeah, they, they...
Have they, have an area, have a festival area?
Yeah.
All right, so Steve is gonna...
You didn't go to any of those?
No. That's why you're planning it and we're gonna go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
I didn't vote for that.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion.
Uh, correspondence tonight, Gostamain Street Program, request authorization to display artwork in Town Hall for the art show hour from October fourteenth to December ninth, and also to open Town Hall from nine AM to four PM on Saturday, October fifteenth, and from noon to three on ten sixteen.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
And Gostamain Street Program also invites the Board of Selectmen, uh, a member, to captain a pumpkin boat at the regatta on October sixteenth.
Motion to have the chairman captain the pumpkin boat?
I was thinking Captain Bligh.
I will be here.
You'll never hear.
I will, I, I'm...
I'd like to make a motion.
You're making a motion for Captain Bligh.
Selectmen Fornia got such a thrill out of it last year, I think he would want to double up on the thrill.
Here's, here's my reason for, my reason for voting for Selectmen Pierce is just, is self, is, it's really, I don't know, I, I just want to see what engineering marvel that you can put together on a giant pumpkin, knowing what you do and everything else, so I, pontoons, I don't know what you're gonna do, helicopter, so I, I would think that you would probably be our best representation. No disrespect to you, Selectmen Devanza, but I just...
He looks very salty, too. Very salty, very seaworthy.
Yeah.
Hook in my hand, too.
All right. Motion to authorize, uh, Selectmen Pierce to captain the boat this year.
Is there a second?
I will second Captain Infamous there, yeah.
Captain Nemo.
All those in favor?
All aye.
Aye, unanimous.
I don't know if I need a motion or not, but the, uh, the intent was to have, um, Town Hall open as a command center for the two-fiftieth on Saturday for the, and also, you're just asked for logistics, and, um, I just don't know if that, if a motion is needed to do that, I just, but I wanted to...
What do you mean, what are, what are you gonna be doing?
Well, what am I gonna be doing? I don't, there's certain things I don't want to divulge, I'll, but the operations of any festival have components to them.
Okay, well, you're gonna be in charge?
Yes. Elizabeth and I, Elizabeth and I will, and David will be here all day.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
But there's just...
Are you, you also advertising for the use of the bathrooms?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
Only committee members can use the, and there'll be a sign on the door, and only the back door will be open.
Okay, because we make arrangements if that was the case, and...
No, no, the only thing that I will request is that we have ex, you know, just leave me a case of toilet paper, just in case, I don't know how this thing's gonna go, not here, but with the porta potties.
A case?
This is a real, real important session.
I'm not going there.
So that's all I need.
We'll talk about, we'll talk soon about that later.
No, 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 no.
He's a TP.
I'm very nervous, you don't understand.
He's a TP.
About the weather.
Emotion, that works.
Dramamine.
Oh, boy.
I don't want to be going to Sully's buying TP for the porta potties, all right?
No, I think I can handle that without a...
The courtesy will be here.
I think I've heard all I need to hear on this one.
Oh, God, is there a motion or not?
No, I don't, well, no, I don't, I don't think, I just want to...
Okay, that's why, it's okay, it's fine, okay.
I will state that the board granted the courtesy.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Assessors recommendations tonight. Um, Veterans Tax Credit for map seven lot one, current use land use change tax lien release on map nine lot sixty and map...
It's also map nine.
Oh, also map nine.
Do map nines, yeah.
And, uh, lot sixty and sixty-eighteen. Also intent of timber cuts, map five lot ninety-two A, map five lot eighty-nine, and today we added some more, map seven lots two, five, eight dash one, and ninety-four.
So moved. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Uh, the Town Clerk has a request for annual conference, uh, requesting the board to approve New Hampshire City and Town Clerk's annual conference total cost is approximately five-hundred-and-forty-six dollars. As a reminder, RSA thirty-one A governs this.
Clarification on that? Could you explain, 'cause I'm kind of lost in, when I read this, it says shall not exceed twenty dollars?
That's for the membership.
For the membership, okay.
And then it just says, after that, members of these several organizations, in addition to the annual membership fee, shall be entitled to receive their actual expenses incurred in attending the annual convention of their respective associations.
Okay, money's in the budget, right?
Yes.
It's been budgeted for. So moved. Okay, is there a second? Is there a second?
Nick made the motion.
No, he made a motion.
Yes, I'll say.
Wait, Dave.
Okay, uh, any further discussion?
Yeah.
What?
If it wasn't by law, I don't know if I would have approved this one, just for what it's worth.
Okay.
And I say that because I've seen the agendas for different conferences that our folks have gone on. This one, to me, did not look like it was worth pound for pound the money that was spent on it, just my own personal opinion. I'm gonna vote for it because it's the law, but I don't, wouldn't have voted for it if it wasn't.
Okay, any, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Thank you. Um, appointments, uh, we're gonna skip the rail trail committee appointments because we don't have the applications, as Selectman Cavassano pointed out before the meeting, so we'll skip those for tonight till we get those applications for you for reappointments. And you do have an application for cable TV alternate position from David Joseph Clark, and that's at seven C in your packets. How does board wish to proceed? Does anyone know the individual?
I, I rec, I recommend perhaps we have an opportunity to talk with Mr. Clark. I attempted twice to visit where he lives and three times to call him, and I've been unsuccessful. I, I just wanted to have a chat for five minutes with him, since I didn't know him. So, uh...
I would agree.
Okay, three, 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 okay.
Invite him to a board meeting?
Selective meeting?
Yes. What is selective meeting?
You said a board meeting. I'm just clarifying which board, okay? Is there anything else, so?
No, the rest of mine would be non-public.
Okay, so, um, do we have any new business? Any old business?
Yes.
Yes, what?
Old business, um, our Director of Public Works, uh, is in Haiti this weekend. He, uh, returns, he returns to the town tomorrow.
Maybe not.
And, uh, just to let the public know, uh, he was invited as part of seven people under the umbrella of the American Public Works Association to, um, go to Haiti as part of a UN effort to assess, uh, infrastructure improvements in that country. I would suspect this infrastructure is water and sewer, and, because they're still having a terrible time with disease. So it was, uh, his trip was, uh, funded by the American Public Works Association, and the role of this town was simply allow him the, the time to participate in that humanitarian effort. We'll welcome him back tomorrow, I'm sure.
Hear what he has to say.
We'll hear what he has to say this week.
Okay, good, thank you for that update. Steve?
If you want to go over, uh, library did meet last week.
They did?
I was there.
Oh, you'd like to give a report? Go right ahead.
I don't have to give a report.
No, but if you'd like to, you don't have to do anything, but if you'd like to.
Well, anyway, um, library did meet, uh, they did prepare their budget that has been forwarded to Sue, correct? You have that?
Yes, I do.
And, and their budget is about, is a little, about three point, I'll give the exact number, it's, uh, three-point-three-five percent more than last year. Um, so you'll have that to review. Second thing, they did talk about something fairly interesting, I thought it was kind of a, interesting, it's kind of a chuckle, they think they have bats in a chimney, but at this point, now they're not sure if it's bats or if it's a, uh, another type of bird, so, all those interested, uh, that, which would be this Tuesday and Wednesday, people, if you want to go there at dusk, people will be observing if it's bats coming out or birds going in. And if it's bats, and so, so the first step in taking care of what's in the chimney is they have to identify it, and it says that bats can easily be evicted, but migratory birds cannot. We have to get that approved by Department of Agriculture, so with any hope, as, if those, anyone who wants to go and watch it on Tuesday and Wednesday, if you want to see what the noise in the chimney is, you'll find out if it's bats or birds.
What type of a chimney is it?
It's the chimney that was the old, uh, the old, I guess it's the fireplace chimneys.
Okay, is there a cleanout down below?
Are you asking to start a fire?
No. I ask if there's a clean out.
Are you asking to start a fire?
I ask if there's a clean out.
Phil, I did not inspect the chimney.
Well, all I'm saying is, if there's a clean out in the chimney, if you open the, the chimney clean out and you observe the droppings, you can determine whether it's birds or bats. And if you wanna know how to do that, I'll do that outside of the...
Well, then I would recommend that you...
With the toilet paper that we're gonna be going...
This board, this board is the wealth of a lot of knowledge.
Phil, I would recommend that you go there on Tuesday, tomorrow or Wednesday, and...
So moved.
And let us know what type of droppings are in the bottom of the fireplace at the library, anyway, I think that would be an interesting piece, but anyway, uh, but the other thing that came up that was probably, uh, uh, more significant was just regards of, um, the library and the, and how, how it's changing in these changing times, and that was what I found, um, most interesting, 'cause honestly, right now, they're talking about the state cutbacks regarding the, the, there's a, there's a, they have, as far as the Gmail, where they're association with other libraries, where you can get books from other libraries, there's a van that goes out and delivers these books from library to library as you order them. And cutbacks in the state have now, um, brought those visits, uh, have, have, um, reduced the amount of visits that the van does in the course of the week, and that was one of their main concerns that, that, um, now they're being forced into only having so many bundles of books that can go out or be received, so they're looking at that as, um, as, as one of their biggest issues, 'cause part of, part of this library system, when you get into, when they get into Gmail, is that they can, obviously, they can tap into all the resources of others, but if you, if the wait starts getting longer, they're not sure where that's gonna go. Uh, other things they talked about is that the physical visits to the library are down, which was very interesting, um, and...
Summer, summertime, right?
Yes, and even fact, the summer reading program was down from last year, but what they're really saying is that how many people, but, but what is interesting is that they're saying, it's almost like the medium is changing, 'cause obviously, we, you know, we talk about eBooks, et cetera, but also they're talking how many people are going in there using the computers, and essentially, they have six, you know, they have six computers in the adult rooms and two down in the children, and they're talking how that's, how that's changing, and, and we all, you know, a lot of times, we automatically think, oh, jeez, most people have a computer in their home, and it was interesting to see how many people go there and they're using it, and what, and what, you know, what percentage of people are using it for looking for jobs, for, for, to create resumes, it was, it was interesting how the library as a resource is changing. And I'm not sure if it's the times, go ahead. Okay, so, that was one of the things they spoke about a lot in regards to that, and also that, I guess they had gotten contact with the chief regarding, would they use the library as a safe place? Uh, regarding in, 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 in areas of event, but of course, honestly, we have the Town Hall, which is hooked up to the generator, and I guess that, as the chief explained, this would do to the job better, so they're gonna, they won't be utilizing it in that regards, and I think that was...
You said the chief, which chief, emergency management chief?
There's a difference between a cooling zone and a safe place, I think, but...
Well, and that was, and that was the other...
Yeah, cooling zone, a place where people can sit, read a book.
Correct.
And, and use a computer would be more, to me, would be more, um, and then this would be, I would agree, that if you had to have a place with a generator, then this is...
For emergency management, yeah.
My question was, which chief, you said chief?
Chief Solon.
Okay.
And as far as, um, the regards of what, 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 as Selectman Gross was saying, they did speak about that, that they did see more people coming in to try and get out of the heat, and they would go in there and utilize the computer, or utilize the, uh, magazines, et cetera. So anyway, so that's a scoop, but...
Okay.
So we'll see you there on Tuesday or Wednesday?
Yeah, Tuesday or Wednesday.
That's not to say that, I guess the library couldn't bring books and magazines over here, if you had to do that, you know?
And, uh, Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec also met Wednesday, had a, had a, uh, discussion, really about, um, their budget, their budget came in at over ten percent more than last year, largely due to capital expenses, so, um, you know, you'll, we're, the, the commission kinda struggled with that, there's a lot of things that, that are in disrepair that need to get fixed, there's really nothing in this, is that, you know, a, a nice to have, it's more of, we need to fix certain things, bathrooms, um, et cetera, at, 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 at the pavilions, um, there's been, you know, there's vandalism, you know, that, that needs to get, you know, kinda fixed, et cetera. Very appreciative to the board in terms of getting the pools fixed, and there was a tremendous, uh, increase in, uh, people going to the pools, a lot of great feedback from the residents about how nicely that the liners were, they didn't cut their feet, um, and the commission was very appreciative of the fact that they were able, that, that this board was able to, uh, you know, kinda pull that together, 'cause it really saved them incredibly, uh, in terms of, you know, pool operations, um, the, by the way, the pools did close this past Sunday. Part of the, part of the, uh, reason is lifeguards, so most of our lifeguards are college students and they go back to college, and, uh, that's, so for those people out there, I, I used to always wonder myself, why aren't we open until Labor Day? It's, the reason is simply because we need the lifeguards and we don't have them. And there was a lot of discussion about the revolving fund, um, and there was discussion as to, okay, how is the board going to approve a, you know, an increase in the budget, albeit, I think that they made a good argument for the items that are representing the increase, um, they talked about, um, to give you a good example, there are, um, two pumps that need to get replaced at the pools, well, these pumps are really expensive, I think they're like four thousand dollars each or something like that. Different, like skimmer line, things, things of that nature, and, um, you know, they talked about, well, you know, should, you know, should we use, you know, this, uh, revolving fund, and, and I think that it was fairly, with the exception of one or two commission members, they felt pretty strongly, that's a maintenance item, that's something, that's a budget, you know, type of thing, the revolving fund was set, was, was for, we had a long discussion about, it was voted on, sold to the community for capital, um, outlays, et cetera, not maintenance type things, and, uh, they had a really long discussion, I have a feeling that we're gonna be hearing from the commission in the months ahead about, about that fund, um, 'cause they, they see a need to make these repairs to the facilities, to try to, but they, they know that the times are tough and that, you know, how is, how is their budget gonna get approved at a ten percent increase, but if I don't fix it now, then it's gonna be worse, we might have to shut down, you know, a pool or something like that, if we don't, we can't afford a pump, that type of thing, so it's kind of where they're, where they're at, I'm sure we'll have a lot more discussions when Rick does the formal presentation too, I don't think it'd be appropriate for me to kinda do that at this point, I think it'd be, just like, right, library, I think the director, the directors will prepare, will present the budgets, and you'll be able, able to ask questions, but, uh, other than that, they had good mem, uh, good participation at the camp, it's the first time where we actually charged residents, and they had a good, steady flow, albeit the numbers were lower than in years past, but it was a good flow. Um, in the past, as you know, we would sign up two hundred kids, but yet only forty would show up on any given day, and really what they saw at both places was, was I think forty to forty-five at Barnard, I think it was twenty-five or thirty at the other one, at Roy. But other than that, um, that, that's been fairly successful.
I would like to say, you know, I did go and visit the pools, and I did jump in the pool, and it, the lining, the way, first of all, just the way the, the chairs are gone, the duct tape was trying to hold umbrellas, and and you would look at the scale and the stuff floating in the pool from it breaking off in the bottom, and it's just, it's just really a nice job, but overall, not just the pools, but even the ro, even the parks, they've done what they can with what they have to, to up, to upgrade, it's just good to see the parks moving in that direction and the pools, and I think Rick's done a good job.
We did have a funny moment of, of the night, um, Steve LaRose, he's a relatively new budget committee member, and he is not like a big guy, you know, um, but anyway, we were talking about the budget, and he leaned forward or back in the chair, like the chair just broke, you know, and I, I don't know...
They're rough enough.
No one set him up either, but the chairs are like, that's another thing, that, a lot of this, it's rough, you know, a lot of the, you know, those...
Was that Parks and Rec?
At the Parks and Rec meeting, yeah, the chair broke.
They're all busted.
When we were talking about budgets, it was, uh, it was kind of, uh, so...
Oh, oh, sorry.
It was, uh, it, it was just kind of a funny thing, but it does, it does highlight the fact that I think when you look at the Parks and Rec budget, I think they're trying to make some, you know, incremental improvements, and it's gonna be diff, really difficult for them to try to come in at a level funded budget, or, um, because they've got so many things, just like I'm sure other departments have as well, that they have to get, uh, accomplished.
Nick? Just a quick question, has there ever been any talk about them meeting here? I know we had discussed it a while ago about having all the, the commissions meet here.
On the camera.
Or just to use one of the rooms here versus...
I'll bring it back.
It was...
Our chairs.
It was mentioned a year ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the other ones that aren't meeting here, uh, library, Parks and Rec, and Solid Waste.
When you were there, did you talk to them about that?
Yes, I did.
Were they?
Um, they weren't that receptive to, and I think also there was some schedule, a little bit of a scheduling issue also, because a lot of it was when we were talking about them doing it here, it was the idea that it would be, that so it could be, so it could be filmed and recorded, and I think, uh, at the time when they were, were meeting, this room was being used, and it was, you know, and at, and at that other time, I don't think there was anything set up in the other room.
I think library and Parks and Rec meet at the same time, right?
Yeah.
They do, yeah.
So there was that, there was, there was those scheduling conflicts at that point.
I can certainly, I'll bring it back to them, do we, I mean, here's the other thing too, this is a...
That's what I was gonna say, is that our position, that we would like all of the...
That's where I'm going with, if that's the case, then it's a question of you, they need to meet here, and it's, right, or no?
Well...
Do we have that authority to do that?
I don't know if we have that authority, and I guess the other issue was when the Parks and Rec addition was added, and it was expanded. Part of it was is to have the meetings there, because where we ran into, although, uh, we might wanna just look at it again, because at the time, uh, court was in here. Uh, we really were short on meeting space, it was a time, so, uh...
Let me see, how do you want me to tackle this?
You could request it, I think that's the approach, is to request it for convenience, once the equipment is all set up here, rather than having GTV travel and pack up everything and bring it to theirs, but they could, they could, I mean...
G, GTV taped a, uh, Solid Waste meeting two months ago, but, you know, it was an effort on their part to...
Right.
Bring cameras and set them up, set three, three cameras up.
And, and, you know, we don't have that kinda staff at GTV to be traveling all the time.
I'll talk to Rick about that, is there a problem?
He has a practical part of it, and I know we don't get a lot of public participation, but that meeting's done in the office, it, it's not like it's in the larger portion of the, the rec building, 'cause a lot of times, there's activities going on...
Right.
During the meeting, and the same with Solid Waste, it's in that smaller room, where in a meeting room here, you do have the ability to...
Right.
Have the public attend, whether or not they do.
We've had a few, I mean, I, I've only been to a couple of, I mean, I've, there's been like three meetings I've probably been to since it took over for you, and we've had a, I think we had one instance where we had somebody sit in on it.
All right.
Wouldn't hurt me, 'cause it's so hot in there, very uncomfortable, the chairs break, I mean, so I'm not gonna complain.
Two fiftieth?
Had that.
Yeah.
Two fiftieth?
Uh, I think I've already reported out.
Sure, I'll give you another opportunity.
Nope.
Perhaps, uh, Andrew could have the fading shot of the, uh, sign as we...
Oh, I have one more.
One, okay.
Issue, uh, not issue, but I just wanted to let the public know that we have two openings in our budget committee right now, we had two resignations, so we encourage people to apply, there are volunteer applications at Town Hall, and also on the town's website. So if they could submit one, um, our chairman, Dan Cludier, has asked that we announce it, it's on the website, it's opening, uh, these are two openings, so hopefully someone will come forward.
That committee reviews their applicants.
Right, and the budget committee would be, uh, appointing the people till the next election, which is in March.
Right, okay. So we need a motion for non-public then?
Make a motion that it's a non-public session, per RSA ninety-one A colon three, Roman rule two E, legal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, roll call?
Yes.
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 We're a non-public session, and, um, I...